Just for, for the record, I will be excusing myself at nine forty-five to do the groundbreaking for the safari expansion at the presidential Chaffee Zoo, our crown jewel, as Mr. Council Vice President would say. So our council vice president will take over during my departure. So this is my warning, Mike, Luis, Nelson, Gary, be nice to him and treat him well. If now we have to.
I will.
When I return.
Yeah, we actually like him.
Thank you. I love you guys.
All right, with that, let's go ahead and do roll call city clerk.
Council member Brettafield.
Yeah.
Council member Chavez.
Here.
Council member Sparza.
Present.
Council member Krevasi.
Present.
Council member Soria. Council vice president Capriolio.
Here.
And president Arius.
Present. Next will be the pledge of allegiance. Gavin, do you have a video?
Yeah, give me one second.
Any of the other council members, do the images freeze on Zoom for you guys?
A little bit.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
City clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes, there are. Let's see. Uh, two of the proclamations that's on today's agenda are being removed. In the minutes, we have some changes from council member Krevasi, and we will make those corrections. It has to do with the honoring, uh, Crowell, former mayor, and he wants the word former removed. We'll get that done. So you'll be approving those as amended. Um, the file ID twenty dash zero zero one two six seven, one o'clock timed item is being moved to ten ten AM. And there's a correction in section number six on the top of page six due to a formatting error. Item four A will be heard at ten thirty AM. Item four C, we're adding council member Chavez as a sponsor. And items table to ten fifteen is item one B and one S's and Sam.
City clerk?
Yes.
Uh, the ten ten was moved to one PM. Are you saying they're trying to move it back?
It, it does say that. It says has been moved. Oh, I'm sorry. It has been moved from ten ten AM to the one o'clock.
Okay.
Guys, thank you.
All right. Any other changes to the agenda? City clerk?
No, no other changes.
Okay, council members, do you have changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Um, give me one second. I want to table item one B as a boy for the October fifteenth meeting. Um, I want to give, um, our frequent users, the media and the press some time to play with the new software, um, before we formally approve. So we'll move that to ten fifteen.
Also, item one S's and Sam, you had that on table as well?
Yes, ten fifteen. That one, that's going to go to the COVID committee for review, and then we'll bring it back on ten fifteen for approval.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm confused. Which one's going to the COVID committee?
Uh, one S. It's a CARES Act item.
Why can't it be discussed by the council today? We're all here. I'm just curious.
It can be.
I mean, how do the other committee members feel?
I'm okay either way. If you guys want to hear it, that's fine. So would you like to hear it today?
Let's hear it today, and then if in discussion we decide we want us into the COVID committee, we can do it then, please.
All right, that's fine. We'll keep it on you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, uh, there's a motion by council vice president to approve the agenda as amended. I'll second it. Uh, roll call, please.
Council member Brettafield?
Yes.
Council member Chavez?
Yes.
Council member Sparza?
Aye.
Council member Krevasi?
Aye.
Council member Soria, absent. Council vice president Capriolio?
Yes.
And president Arius.
Yes. All right, council, we don't have any ceremonial presentations. Before we go into, um, closed session, I do want to give the opportunity for council member Chavez to say a few words on who we're going to adjourn the meeting on whose behalf.
Yeah, thank you, President. I just wanted to, you know, give an extra special thanks to, uh, United Health Centers. As many of us know, um, Dr. Shankerman, um, lost his battle with COVID, uh, recently, and, uh, he was very instrumental in helping set up all the protocols for, uh, the health clinics that UHC operates. Um, and I understand that that was the model use for other, um, FQHC. So I wanted to, uh, adjourn the meeting in his name. And then also, um, you know, that wasn't bad enough. We lost a great educator, uh, principal, uh, in Southeast Fresno, um, and my former teacher at Roosevelt, uh, Mr. Tim Lyles, um, uh, lost his battle with, uh, cancer. And, you know, I just want to express my condolences to the family. Um, there was a vigil, uh, held, um, last night outside of Sunnyside High. Um, and I think that just tells you the, the impact that he had in the, in the area. And, and, you know, I wanted to adjourn, uh, today's meeting, uh, in both of their, uh, names. Um, so I'd appreciate that.
Council president?
Yes, council vice president, you have the floor.
If, uh, I, I too would like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Bob Spencer. He was a former Fresno State women's basketball coach. He was a legend for a number of reasons. He became the first NCAA women's basketball coach to earn five hundred career wins. Uh, Coach Spencer led the Bulldogs twice to appear in the women's NIT tournament, nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety. So our prayers, our thoughts are with his friends and his family. So if he can do adjourn in his loving memory today, I'd appreciate that as well. Thank you.
So move. Um, thank you, council members. It's been a tough, uh, twenty twenty for a lot of us, and we've had a lot more losses than wins, but we'll keep on working through the year and, and hope for brighter days. Um, with that, for the general public, we will go into closed session now, after which we will return with the consent calendar. At that time, we will also take public comment on the consent calendar and unscheduled oral communications, um, at that time when we return from closed session. So council, you should have a closed session link on your calendars, um, under closed session. We will see you there in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Um, legal counsel, um, what's in closed session, please, for the record?
Right, we have only conference with legal counsel concerning public security.
Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Okay, folks, let's go to our agenda. We're going to do something very unusual. We're going to try to be timely. So we're going to go to the ten AM item first. I hear you to adopt resolutions and ordinance annexing property in a special levy in District Two. This is a, a staff presentation by Public Works. This is in two. Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Which, which item are, is this, I'm sorry, Mr.?
This is, we're going to do a ten, we're going to be on time. We're going to do the ten AM item at ten.
Okay, got it, got it.
Uh, is there anyone in the public, uh, the committee wishes to make some constructive comments on this item? That is the ten AM item. Seeing none, any council comments?
Excuse me, Paul, there are members of the public that wish to make comments.
On the ten AM item.
They have their hands up.
Yes, sir. So there is going to be Lisa Flores first, Tyler Mackey second, Gloria Hernandez third. Tyler, or Lisa, go ahead.
Uh, real quick question, Paul. Um, I thought you have to take, uh, public comments and concerns first before you move to the agenda items, even if they're timely, because, you know, that's what I was led to believe, and I've been hanging out, waiting for you guys to come back into session, so I can make my public comments regarding your agenda.
Yeah, we'll take that at a later, uh, later time. We're going to try to stay on schedule here with the ten AM item.
Is that like in violation of Robert's rules?
No, it's not.
That is not required.
Thank you.
Do you wish to comment on the ten AM item? If not, we'll move to the?
No, actually, I have three comments on your agenda, actually.
Okay, well, when we have open, uh, session, then we'll take those comments or on item by item. But thank you for phoning in. Appreciate you. Uh, next would be Tyler Mackey. Tyler, do you have comments, brief comments on the ten AM item?
I just jumped back on, um, because you guys were in closed session, and I was just kind of standing by. So are we discussing, are we up for four A at this point where we can discuss that?
No, we're at the ten AM item at page six of our agenda. So we're going to try to do the timed items out of respect for those that have set timed items, and then we'll go back to the regular agenda. Uh, Gloria?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing, because I was led to believe that public comment was the first item.
No, it's not. Uh, we're going to do the timed items first, and then we'll go back to that as soon as we can get through these, uh, two or three items that have been set on the agenda. So thank you. Uh, any other, uh, comments from my colleagues? Are we ready to vote? Seeing none, uh, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Council member Brettafield?
Yes.
Council member Chavez?
Yes.
Council member Sparza?
Aye.
Council member Krevasi?
Aye.
Council member Soria?
Yes.
Council vice president Capriolio?
Yes.
And president Arius is absent.
Okay, the, uh, ten, ten oh five and ten ten items have been continued. That puts us at the ten fifteen item. It's now ten seventeen. This is a consideration of a text amendment application, uh, from Planning and Development Department. We ready to proceed? Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Thank you much. Uh, we'll go to the public. Does the public wish to comment on the ten fifteen item?
No, sir. No, sir.
Screen is clear, uh, council members. Anyone wish to address the ten fifteen item? Seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Council member Brettafield?
Yes.
Council member Chavez?
Yes.
Council member Sparza?
Aye.
Council member Krevasi?
Aye.
Council member Soria?
Yes.
Vice president Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arius is absent.
Okay. Uh, city attorney, can I go ten twenty now? It's a joint meeting with Fresno Joint Powers Financing Authority, which is the last timed item.
You're muted, city attorney. City attorney, you're muted?
Council vice president, am I?
Sorry. Oh, sorry. For the ten twenty, it includes the President of Joint Powers Financing Authority. We need at least two of the mayor, council president, and council member Soria. You might want to circle back to that one.
Would the mayor and, uh, council member Soria be adequate?
We are attempting to get the mayor on right now. They take a few minutes.
Okay, council, but might we go past the consent agenda? We've got to do the comments on, uh, the comments though, but, uh, scheduled, we could do the consent.
I've got it. Well, if you'll round up the mayor, let me know. We'll jump to that as soon as he's available. That puts us back on, uh, council member, uh, reports and comments. I'll start off, uh, that segment. Uh, this, this morning, we did our second distribution of Safer Food Meal, a program for our seniors. That was initiated by member Krevasi, member Chavez, and myself. I drove over there today, and we had a long line of cars of seniors who are interested in that fantastic, well-balanced meal. And we're doing a distribution next Thursday as well. So I want to thank all those that were involved. That's Pardini's Catering, the volunteers, Parks, Aaron Aguirre, Northeast Fresno Police Officers, and Fresno State Police Department for helping us get the boxes loaded safely in the cars. My next and, uh, final comment is that it's a sad day, but a happy day for the university. And what that means is, the good news is for Dr. Castro. He is now a new appointment as chancellor-elect of the entire California State University system. Uh, the bad news is I'll miss him, and, uh, our community will miss him, because he's been a great president and a great leader. But his record of accomplishments underscores his commitment to higher education, and under his bold leadership, that will be reflected, in my view, on all the campuses, who will all strive to attain even greater success. And as you all know, uh, President Castro and his team put Fresno State on the map. We are in so many, uh, areas of accomplishment. We're in the league with, uh, Stanford, MIT, uh, various major universities. But guess what? Fresno State, thanks to Dr. Castro and his boldness, is in that league. So we thank you, Dr. Castro, and, and personally, I'm going to miss you. I don't think the new president's going to call me Pablo, and I can't call him Bold Joe, because you are bold. And I, I, I love our relationship. We both started in two thousand thirteen, uh, except you've accelerated past me, which is not unusual. But, uh, congratulations, sir. I'm wearing my Bulldog tie in commemoration of this great event for you and your family and the great staff at Fresno State. Thank you very much. Who'd like to speak next? Uh, member Soria?
Thank you, um, council vice president. I have a few comments and a request. I, I would like to request this meeting in, um, in adjournment in memory of our, um, Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Um, as we all just heard a few days ago, we lost what I believe is an iconic figure, um, in our country, um, someone that was a trailblazer for women, um, for gender equality. Um, I want to just, you know, express my gratitude and honor the legacy that she has left. Um, because of her, um, I and women across this country have benefited from her work. We can actually open a bank account and buy a home without having to get a man to co-sign for us. And so she was someone that represents what is equity and justice in our, in our country. And so I do want to adjourn in her memory.
We will definitely do that. Thank you for those, uh, that request.
And then, um, just a couple other comments that I wanted to make. So every year, um, the city of Fresno, and in particular, the Tower District, hosts the Fresno Real Pride, um, event. It's a film festival that has been going on, uh, for, I think, three decades or, or so. And I just want to remind folks that while we are in COVID, um, they are, um, going to be still hosting it, and it's going to be from home. And so this, this event is going to be taking place virtually on Saturday, October tenth, um, starting at eleven AM. Um, tickets are still available, so, um, make sure that you guys, you know, go online and find out, um, the different featured films that they will be hosting at realpride.com. Um, also want to remind folks that, um, this council approved the Fresno CARES program. It's also a food distribution, um, program. This is, we are looking for other community partners. Um, so those that want to, um, do additional food distribution in the neighborhoods, um, if you are interested, uh, please call us at five five nine two three four zero seven zero seven. Um, and that's, um, citywide. So for those nonprofits that want to, that need the resources, um, or, um, want to start a, a food distribution, distribution site, please call that number. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who's next? Uh, member Krevasi.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um, just a couple of quick announcements. Um, I wanted to congratulate Bob Myers, who's a District Two resident. He actually did come to the council meeting last year. He is the winner again of the world's fastest professional gunfighters national championship. It's fast draw. And, um, you know, that, that's another world championship for him, and that person lives in Fresno. Of course, you know, we can't forget the US Open and Bryson DeChambeau and what he was able to accomplish. It's another champion who has roots in Fresno, having attended Clovis East. Um, we also have, um, comment about, councilor, council vice president made comments about President Castro. I want to thank the Castro family. Um, I, like, we talked last night, we both agreed to wear our ties today. And, um, we really appreciate everything you've done for Fresno State. It's with a lot of pride that we were educated at that fine institution. And, you know, you've been a treasure, a crown jewel of District Four, and now you can be a crown jewel of the state of California. Thank you for your service. The last thing I want to say for a program, the Senior Aid for Food and Resources, um, we're just about to finish week two. I want seniors to know that if you're a city of Fresno resident and you want a week's supply of groceries from the five food groups, uh, we've partnered, uh, with Pardini's to do that, and using your CARES dollars, you can call six two one seven two three seven, or you can go online, which is faster. Or if you have a family member that can help you with that, and go to fresnicovidhealth.com forward slash SAFR, fresnicovidhealth.com, and we will, um, be sure to get you signed up. And signups for next week begin Friday at two PM. Uh, I'm going to share a letter, just, I'll read part of it, that was left by a resident, uh, at the distribution center, one of the sites. Her name is Dolores Davidian, and I'm going to give this to the clerk so it could be on the record. Um, but I'm just going to say, uh, read the first part. "Expressing my heartfelt gratitude to Fresno's leaders, Fresno City Council, Pardini's, and all others who are sponsoring the Senior Aid for Food and Resources program. Because of COVID nineteen, many seniors are fearful of shopping. Depending on others to supply our basic needs, we feel is a super great imposition. Some seniors have transportation issues. The Senior Aid for Food and Resources program is such a marvelous redeeming way of keeping us safe from the many germs that easily could attack our vulnerable immune system. And a bushel of thank you for all those who sacrifice time, money, talents, and love to give Fresno seniors a gift of nourishment delicious food. Thank you so much, Dolores. You are the reason why we do these things. It does take work, but, uh, we're here to serve." And I want to thank my colleagues for supporting the program. And hopefully, when the pilot is over, we can extend the program for a full citywide. It's open to all city residents, but we can have distribution centers citywide. That's the hope. Thank you so much, Dolores. Now, those are my comments.
Thank you, member Krevasi, next. I think the screen is clear. Uh, I understand, uh, Brettafield, member Sparza?
No, no, Nelson, you go ahead.
Uh, I'll be, I'll be quick. I just, uh, wanted to, uh, reiterate that we'll be having a mobile testing clinic for COVID nineteen, uh, tomorrow morning at McLean High School between eight AM and, uh, twelve PM. Uh, and also we're giving away, uh, masks, uh, there as well. So I think I announced that last week. We're just reinforcing that now that we're a lot closer. And then, uh, just as my colleagues have done, I want to extend, you know, publicly my sincere congratulations to, uh, President Castro. Uh, fun fact, when I, uh, when I was at, uh, an undergraduate at UC Riverside, I did not have the privilege of attending Fresno State. Uh, but Timothy White was my, uh, my, uh, campus chancellor over at, uh, UC Riverside. And, uh, he moved on to become the, the CSU, uh, chancellor and, and, uh, really glad to see, uh, President Castro now moving into that position as Chancellor White, uh, transitions out. Uh, so again, my sincere congratulations, and that'll be it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we go to, uh, member Brettafield. There you are.
Yes, thank you very much. And I want to echo also what, uh, council member Soria said about Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Uh, whether you agree with her positions or not, I mean, she was a trailblazer and, uh, somebody who led the way for many people and an incredible role model. And so, uh, want to acknowledge that, that fact for her. And, uh, we mourn her passing and, uh, uh, just are grateful for her service. Uh, having said that, I want to, uh, also recognize the, uh, uh, the rally that took place, uh, the last several days ago about open businesses. Uh, again, businesses that continue to, uh, be hurt terribly, uh, by the policies of the governor, uh, and the policies of, uh, the city of Fresno. And so, um, they're planning on apparently opening October first. It's been six months. Uh, the fourteen day, uh, uh, flatten the curve in April has turned into the six-month nightmare and counting. Uh, additionally, uh, our schools continue to be closed. Uh, the transmission rates for kids just recently passed, uh, unveiled by the CDC is extremely low, remotely low. And yet, we know that the kids are being hurt by not being in school, uh, in terms of depression, social isolation, anxiety. Uh, we saw recently that, uh, suicide rates have spiked. Uh, kids are not, uh, who are being abused are not being detected, uh, protected because they're not in school. And so the destruction from these, uh, foolish, uh, policies, uh, continue. Uh, I would encourage this council, uh, to, uh, uh, stop, uh, pressing on businesses and allow them, uh, to open up, and they will do so safely, following the CDC guidelines, as they did months ago before they were shut down again, uh, by the governor, who initially declared that, uh, uh, some, uh, twenty-six million Californians would be infected by May. Uh, he's fallen short by twenty-five million people. Um, this is a man who we've all, uh, sought his, uh, leadership on COVID nineteen, uh, to make us safe. And this is the man who's released twenty thousand inmates, uh, in our community, has homeless all over the highways that we can't remove by his edict. Uh, so he's not making anybody safe. Uh, we have shootings, uh, every night and stabbings most days, eighty percent increase in, uh, shootings since April. Uh, and that's because of these releases and no bail, uh, policy. So, yeah, I'm going to finish. That's, um, basically, uh, the person that, uh, our, our city is looking to for leadership. The county looks to for leadership, and there is no leadership. The goalpost changed. So, um, we need to do something to help our businesses. I think we can, and hopefully we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, screen is clear. Uh, well, now I see the mayor. We'll jump to the ten twenty joint meeting with Fresno Joint Powers Financing Authority. These are actions pertaining to the issuance of, uh, Series twenty twenty A bonds. Uh, I don't know, mayor, would you like to start it, or city manager, who would like to take the item?
And I have, I have Mike Lima here when you're ready. Mayor, do you, do you want to say anything, or can we turn it over to Mike?
Sure, Mike.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning, council members and JPFA board members. Mike Lima, Finance Director Controller. Before you today is an item that will authorize the sale of no more than twenty-two million dollars of bonds, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the construction and equipping of a new animal control shelter located at fifty-two seventy-seven East Airways Boulevard.
Department, that's in District Four.
It is in District Four. You are right. Yes. Um, the animal shelter will consist of five buildings, which will support the shelter's administration, operations, veterinary, animal housing, and customer service functions. The facility is planned to open in late two thousand twenty-one, and to facilitate that opening, council awarded a construction contract to North Star General on May twenty-first, two thousand twenty. The facility will be owned by the Joint Powers Financing Authority and leased back to the city under the two thousand eight master lease at a rate equal to the annual debt service payment. The payment is expected to be no higher than one point eight million a year. However, the actual annual debt service won't be known until the bond sale is complete. The lease payment will be a general fund obligation. The bonds will have a maturity of twenty-five years, with final payoff occurring on April first, two thousand forty-six. Staff expects the bond sale to occur in about two weeks, with the sales closing occurring by the end of October. Staff recommends that both the council and JPFA board approve the resolutions authorizing the sale of these bonds. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's in District Four. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Thank you.
So does the GP, the JPA have to first take a vote and then the council?
The order doesn't matter, but it needs to be both independently.
So the J, uh, JPA, uh, is there a motion or a vote?
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Just, it's just me and the mayor.
Okay, I'll second it. Uh, can we have a roll call vote on both those items? Which ones do I vote on? Uh, let me, let me back up. I got ahead of myself. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on these two items? Well, there's one item, but two facets to it, I'll put it that way. Uh, I don't see anyone.
There is no public comment.
Okay, and now we'll back to the council. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Hey, Paul? Yes, sir. This is part of the process with the SPCA is now canceling the contract. They've given us extensions. So this is a mandated service. This will give us a state-of-the-art facility that our goal down the road will be a kill-free shelter. So it's a big step in the right direction for the city of Fresno. Unfortunately, we will have to incur, you know, some debt service to build it, but I think it's a, a, a strong step in the right direction. It should be done by late next year. Thank you. Uh, councilman Soria, councilman Brettafield for being on the committee that, uh, that saw this through, and we're monitoring the progress closely and, uh, looking forward to it being completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, member Brettafield, I think we're ready to vote, but go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just want to also, uh, I want to thank, uh, Sal Gonzalez, uh, Mr. Ed Cashin, and, uh, Mike Krevasi, uh, and others who, uh, helped, uh, in getting that land, uh, the gap. And I frankly want to thank the gap for participating, uh, in helping, uh, solve a critical need in the city of Fresno, which we obviously had. I mean, many people have expressed concern about things, uh, for some time. And I think this, in the future, uh, is going to be a great thing for the city of Fresno, and of course, for our animals, which is what this is, this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Doug, uh, can we take one vote on both these, uh, items, or do they need to be individually voted?
Well, actually, have the council vote, and then have the authority take their action.
Very good. So, uh, madam clerk, the council's ready to vote. Would you have a roll call, please?
Council member Brettafield?
Yes.
Council member Chavez?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes. Next, we'll have a roll call vote on the Fresno Joint Powers Committee. Is that the proper title?
Yes, this, this is the mayor and Councilmember Soria then.
Correct. Roll call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Soria.
Actually, they need to make a motion and second.
I made the motion.
He made the motion, and the mayor will need to second. Okay.
Are you seconding it?
It's seconded.
Okay.
Time.
Remember those old days?
Very good. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Soria? And Mayor Brand.
You.
Congratulations. Job well done to the whole team that's been involved with this. I know a lot of people touched this particular item. So congratulations to all and thanks to everyone who's made this possible for our community. Clarification, Madam Clerk, item 4A. Was that time for 10:30?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to that item now. This is item 4A. Trying to stick with our timeliness, and this is a bill for introduction and adoption relating to outdoor dining, and this is sponsored by Councilmember Soria. Do you have a motion, member?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second by Member Carbasi. So we have a motion by Member Soria, second.
And then, okay.
Go ahead. If you have a comment, sir.
No, go ahead, Council, Council Vice President. I think there's some questions.
Yeah, we have the motion again by Member Soria, second, and by Member Carbasi. We can go to the public. Anyone in the public wish to be heard on this item?
I think Tyler Mackey mentioned this, right?
Yes, Tyler Mackey has raised his hand.
Okay, well, Mr. Mackey, you, you're, you're welcome to comment on this item.
Thank you, council and Council Vice President. My name's Tyler Mackey, and I am the Executive Director of the Tower District Marketing Committee, a 22-year-old nonprofit business association that represents the businesses of the Tower District. We are a 20-plus member organization, and we represent the majority of the bars and restaurants. We appreciate all that the city of Fresno has done for the Tower District, but on this item, it's very important to us that we begin to restore the culture of our community and bring back some of the jobs. We're, we're struggling to fill our patios. And music is one thing that we believe can bring people back. It's something people come to expect of our community, and we'd like to see it back. We believe we can do it very safely. We believe that it is happening already all over town. It's just being done as businesses decide they want to do it. So it's creating an unfair playing ground for everybody, and our district, a lot of our members, we haven't been showing up at rallies. We've been silently, you know, quietly talking with council and working on solutions. But this is one that we feel it's time for us to speak up and say, please let us bring music back in a safe way that's regulated and that meets some parameters. There are mariachi bands all over town playing. This sets up some reasonable restrictions and allows us to safely bring business back to our desperately hurting businesses. And we understand that this is a time where if we move into the, the next level down, it becomes safer. We're not going to be trying to move these things back inside if we're allowed to move them outside. But we recognize this is only going to be a small window before the weather turns against us. So we would love to see this happen quickly, recognizing it'll only last for a while. So we want to make hay while the sun shines, for lack of a better phrase. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, then we'll go back to the council. There's a motion and a second. Now, if there's any council comments. Member Brettafield, you have your.
I, I just was wanting to ask Councilmember Soria. So is that why you wanted to make these changes from what the gentleman was saying?
Yeah, so restaurants across the city have been asking for some relief when it comes to some entertainment, and I think this will allow them. It's a reasonable policy that would allow in their, in their extension so that they're not in violation of any of their CUPs. So that's why we're doing it.
Thank you.
Any other council member? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council Vice President Capriolio?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Congratulations, Member Soria. Okay, now we can go to the consent calendar and unscheduled communication. Would any member wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Oh, Member Brettafield. I thought we were going to get away with a vote. Member Brettafield?
Yeah, no, I'm not removing anything. I just wanted to register a no vote on the consent calendar for Q, as in quiet, nobody in particular, and R as in Robert, Q and R.
That is so noted, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Member Carbasi?
No votes on Q and R, please.
Okay, we, Madam Clerk, you have that.
I do.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
So, Council Vice President, just a point of clarification. So I missed early this morning when there were changes to the agenda. Were any items removed or I was just, I didn't, since I missed that first portion, I just wanted to make sure.
The only item that was pulled from consent was item 1B as in boy.
And then 1S is going to be heard at what time, clerk?
Nope.
15, I think.
I think it, I think it will just be on a contested consent, which could go right after consent.
Okay.
So we're indicating 1S is contested consent. So that's the only item that's pulled thus far. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone in the public wish to address the consent calendar before we go into a vote and then unscheduled communication?
Yes, we have Lisa Flores.
Lisa, you may proceed.
I got a question. What are you guys doing with the cannabis stuff on Q and R? Did you take it off the agenda or I, I'm, I need some clarification on that.
It's on the agenda. As far as I know, on the consent calendar, there are two registered no votes from Members Carbasi and Brettafield.
So they're voting no on it, but if you guys vote yes on the agenda, it passes?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just need that clarification.
You're, you're welcome. Anyone else?
Yes, Brandy, you're next.
Brandy, please proceed with some constructive comments.
Is this also for, for unscheduled communication?
I was going to do that next, but if.
Okay, I, I can wait till then.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Cody?
Cody? Oh, hey, Cody, you're, good to hear from you. He worked for me at the council here. So you may proceed with your comments, sir. Cody?
Cody, you are unmute.
You have to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Paul. I was just wondering when council was going to address the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act?
Yeah, 1:00, I believe.
Yeah, 1:00 P. M.
Much obliged. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Cody.
There are no other comments.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
No, we don't.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as modified?
Second.
So, Member Chavez, I couldn't hear you, but I think it was you.
Councilmember Carbasi.
Oh, I thought Carbasi was the second.
Sparza.
It was me.
Thank you, Nelson. Motion by Member Sparza, second, by Member Carbasi. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria? Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Vice President Capriolio.
Yes, and again, the record will note a no vote on items Q and R by Members Carbasi and Brettafield.
Correct.
Very good. Now we can go to unscheduled communication. I believe Brandy was patiently waiting.
We have Crystal Reed.
Okay, Crystal, we would love to hear your comments.
Thank you for letting me address you today. My name is Crystal Reed. I'm with A+ Property Management, and I am currently a property manager within your community. And I have, represent a lot of different owners in different aspects and different price points, as far as rental price points. I am urging the council to relook at the non-entry of inspections into the homes. We have a lot of deferred maintenance going on. We have tenants calling into code enforcement and which is causing a bigger workload on code enforcement. And we are not able to go in and do inspections. Right now, we are able to do a couple of different things to get rid of quote-unquote tenants not taking care of properties and doing illegal activities via evictions. So I am urging the councils to redo the guidelines based on CDC, social distancing, and an offering or basically giving a different alternative to, so we can go in and the owners can maintain their homes, which is one of their biggest investments, and also do it in a safe manner.
Thank you.
I have lots, I'm sorry?
Oh, I thought you were finished.
No, I have lots of different ideas. I could work with the council on how we can do this in a safe manner, but also allow owners to have access to their properties. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you. Thanks for chiming in with us. Gloria Hernandez, I think you're next.
Yes, I'm calling about, I'm talk, I'm calling about the issue of what happened with the independent review reviewer yesterday. I want to make the following statement for the record. His trust was hanging by a thread, and now the thread has been broken, and the independent reviewer must release the audit on London Wallace and Gerald Johnson immediately. He should then resign in shame. He violated his job duty to, quote, "work to strengthen community trust in the Fresno Police Department by providing neutral, third-party review of police policies, procedures, strategies, and internal investigation," unquote. He made a decision that impacts the lives of many of us in Fresno. As a police commissioner, I've been putting in many hours to reform the police. He has made my duty difficult. I have been fighting for civilian review since the late 90s, and I've continued to do so for the well-being of our community who has lived in fear and has suffered trauma for too many years. He must resign or be terminated. Thank you.
I have almost done with the calendar. Give me three more minutes, we'll finish. Gloria, thank you for your service to our community as well as in your comments. We appreciate that.
Next is Kyle Schmidt.
Kyle?
Hey. Lopez Schmidt, 3035 North Ferris. I also wanted to speak on the independent police auditor. John Glada has really destroyed the public's trust by concealing his report. And we demand that he immediately release the, his report on London Wallace and Gerald Johnson. And then that is a, a demand of the community to, to the city of Fresno, and we demand that John resign from his position, that he's violated his independent police auditor charge, and that the, the city begin working with the police commission on reworking that job position to protect against this type of abuse in the future.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate your comments. Who's next?
Next is Lisa Flores.
Hi, Lisa, you have three minutes.
Oh, three minutes. Oh, okay. Um, well, I just have.
No one watches their clock when they speak, so it always goes over, so.
Oh, no, I'll keep it short, Paul, because I got dishes I got to do. That's why I like Zoom. I can actually clean my house and listen to you guys. I have three general comments. The first one, I'm shocked and appalled by the comments and the press release from Andy Hall. I found it, even though he was trying to uplift the police department and the cops, I found it inappropriate, immoral, and racist, actually. I get generally offended anytime I hear a person in power start to talk about circling the wagons. I'm a federally recognized tribal Indian, and when I hear circle the wagons, I automatically think of genocidal practices, and these guys are going around with guns. And, you know, my forefathers had to live through, you know, a price on their heads as little as 25 cents. But luckily, they didn't wipe us out. This, you know, so I would ask that the city council, you know, admonish this man for his statement. There's a right way to do it, and then there's a wrong way. There's a right way to invoke hope, promise, and perpetual peace in Fresno, and then there's a way to stir it up. Second, the police transparency, the independent report, I'm a little shocked. How come I can't see it? Where's the transparency? We have a young man, 17 years old, that was accosted by the police. That report should be out. There should be some transparency. When you hide things, it just makes people wonder what sort of malfeasance is going on. What are, what is the cover-up? And then the third is, hey, Gary, I see that, you know, you're still promoting the pandemic business rally number two. Just want to remind you that all our businesses would be open, and we would have a freer society if you would have preached more about, you know, face masks and safety versus going against the CDC and just continuing your rhetoric of, hey.
Lisa, you really need to direct the comments toward me.
Okay, finally.
Rather than an individual member. Thank you.
Okay. Well, finally, then, could you please tell Mr. Arias that I thank him and his staff, particularly his staff person, Ms. Garcia? I thank her very much for the rapid response and positive outcome to an issue I had regarding some homeless issues in his district, and really respect and appreciate not only the rapid response, but also a positive outcome to it. So I thank you very much for your time. Gary?
Anyone else?
Yes, we have Brandy.
Oh, Brandy, correct. Thank you for waiting, Brandy. You, you may proceed with your constructive comments.
Thank you very much, Paul, and thank you so much for being considerate of me. The, I have three items. The first two that were stated by Pete, better than I could have, by, so I, I just want to stand in agreement with the statements of Gloria and Kyle regarding the audit and ask the same thing. I agree with Lisa regarding the comment that, that, that Chief Hall has made and say that his, his statement is unacceptable. I also want to express my support for the efforts by the mayor and those of you on the council who have been following local CDC, local and CDC guidelines and the state mandates to keep Fresno safe and open business safely. Thank you for speaking up for the vulnerable populations and for pointing out the demographics, graphics that are most affected by illness and death. I know you've received a lot of criticism and online attacks for not defying those guidelines, but I want you to know that there's a lot of us who are very grateful. I know it's not easy for businesses right now and emphasized, but I perceive that some of the criticisms are for weak areas in the system that aren't the fault of the council. I appreciate the efforts of the council to provide assistance to the business owners and take steps like the parklets and the outdoor dining, and I appreciate the last week's plan to open safely. I thank you for the food distributions and the test, the COVID test, testing. This hasn't been easy, but we can't pretend this disease isn't harmful, and I am mourning the death of Dr. Shankerman. I'm a patient at United Health Centers, and I hope that his efforts and others who literally gave their lives won't be lost. I am disappointed with those who aren't respecting this and ask that all of the council use safe, I mean, promote safety so that we can open safely, but that we, we are not sacrificing anyone. And I also want to thank Soria for, and those for recognizing Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Carrie.
Carrie?
Hi, folks. Thank you for the recognition. My name is Carrie Lorena Yalla. My pronouns are she or they. I live and work in District 1. I grew up in the Tower District and have also lived in District 2 and worked in District 3. I am here because you are failing on the issue of police violence, the domination of political processes by police, and the complete and utter lack of accountability that continues to be one of the most pressing issues, keeping Fresno in the dark ages and hurting our people. I am a taxpayer, and I vote in every election. I organize daily, and I practice my spirituality and connect with the next generation to ensure the growth and sustainability. I am a taxpayer, and I vote in every election. I organize daily, and I practice my spirituality and connect with the next generation to ensure the growth and sustainability of the future of our community. Yesterday, the murderers of Breonna Taylor, may she rest in peace, were acquitted. The country is on fire with rage against anti-black policing and criminal justice, and not one of you mentioned a thing about the failure of the justice system, nor the violence against people in your own community as reflected in this national struggle. You have a police chief who is publicly catering to the feeling of police in a statement yesterday, in the midst of a revelation that the sole modicum of accountability, the so-called independent advisor withheld information about brutality against a black teenager for fear of public response. You have an incoming mayor who during his time as the chief of police had a documented history of racism and attitude and practice. This is not the Wild West. These are people's lives.
You want to wrap it up, please?
Sure. I've been attending the so-called Commission on Police Reform meetings, and it is unreal how much administrative time is spent on catering to the tender little feelings of police officers because their jobs are hard and people don't like them. You know, who else is in that position? Literally everyone who works with the public. The scourge of poverty, addiction, and mental illness affect our culture at every level, and yet you all continue to invest in policing at the expense of programs and services that will actually provide our community the support and opportunities they so desperately need.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Yes, lastly, we have Terry.
Terry, we welcome constructive comments.
Terry?
Terry, are you there?
You are ready to be unmute. You have to unmute yourself.
Almost, Terry, you're almost there.
Okay.
We have to unmute.
Well, we can, we can come back to Terry then.
Next, we have Matthew.
Matthew, you may proceed.
Hello, my name is Matthew Woodward. I'm a resident in District Two, and I am very concerned about the news this week about the police auditor and how he withheld that report. While I'm a white citizen, I am concerned that if anyone were to be beaten by the police or anything other misconduct, that the police department is not going to be held accountable. It, it's startling to me that this is the same week that Breonna Taylor got no justice for her death at the hands of Minneapolis, of Louisville, Kentucky Police Department. And I don't know, I just, is there any way I can know for sure that we, anyone who's gonna get beaten by the cops or have unfairly put in jail for a crime they didn't commit? Is, is there any way we can be certain that we can get justice in our city today? And besides that, I will, and my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Next?
That is all.
Thank you very much for those comments. Our illustrious president has returned, although I'd asked him to allow me to do one more item, 4C, a resolution authorizing the application of the safer funding grants. This is Member Carbasi, and I'll turn it back to the president. I think he's up to speed. After that, I think we have 4B and 4D, and we're pretty much done. But Member Carbasi, you have the floor.
Member Soria.
Sorry?
I just wanted to ask some questions given some of the comments that were made during unscheduled communication to the city manager.
Can, can we do this first, then go back to that? I just want to get this done. I promised Member Carbasi I would.
Okay, that's fine, but I did want to have some questions.
Yeah, I have a question too. So I want to go back to that too. Councilman Soria, good point. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4C.
I'll second it. Go ahead, sir.
No, I, we just, this is basically instruction that we will apply for the safer grant for our fire department. This is the application process and identify funding for drill schools. You know, now, you know, of course, we're all talking about the fires. We've been breathing the air, and we know how our neighbors are facing this crisis, but we still have in, in Fresno, a severe demand. We are the sixth largest city by area. And, you know, we have, I think, a tremendous fire department, but staffing has always been an issue, and moving forward, we're going to have to explore grant opportunities. Now, I do want to thank some people for helping me get to this point. Of course, my co-sponsor, I want to thank the city manager for sitting down with me and hashing this out. I want to thank the fire chief, and I want to thank the members of Local 753 as well for coming to the table so we can move forward on this important item.
Thank you very much. We'll go to a public comment. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on item 4C?
There's no public comment.
We'll bring it back to the council. Any council members wish to address this? Let me know. Raise your hand or our screen is clear. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Aye.
Council Vice President Caprio Leo?
Yes.
President Arias?
Yes.
Are you up to speed on the agenda, or I can?
Walk me through what items are we on next?
Well, we're going to go to our comment by our colleagues that was just mentioned, and then items 4B and 4D are, as I see it, all that's left on the agenda.
I believe we're also supposed to discuss 1S and Sam.
1S was pulled from the consent calendar. Thank you. I can continue.
I'll, I'll take over, Council Vice President. Thank you for filling in.
You're welcome. It was, it was, I brought back good memories. Moved it along. We're gonna be done before 12.
Zoom is not difficult. It's not the enemy. You just got to embrace it. All right, council, with that, let's go to comments from the council. I know there's some outstanding comments that wanted to be made, so we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Soria. After that, we'll go to item 1S under consent.
Councilmember Carbasi wanted to speak after Councilmember Soria.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to ask the city manager, because I did see some of the, I think, the news story that was posted on the auditor, so I wanted to follow up and see what, if there was some follow-up to why the process happened the way that it did. And can this council, can you, you guys come back and give a presentation in terms of what is the process? I think that we need to be consistent, and we need to, as a community, we need to be transparent about what is happening, so I don't know if there was more details than what was shared out in the press. But from your guys' perspective, I just want to get an update on where we're at with the auditor and what happened.
I would ask the city attorney, Doug, given the pending litigation surrounding the comment, is this something that we should save for a future closed session?
Well, any details of the matter, specific to the matter, can be discussed in closed session. As far as process, I mean, we could discuss that in open session.
Yeah, and I, I want to point out, though, in 2017, when the independent police auditor resolution went to council, it was the, an annual report that the Office of Independent Review was supposed to produce, but when John Glada came on board, he demanded that a quarterly report be produced for just the sake of keeping the public engaged. I will say that John, it works very independently from my office and the police department. And his office isn't even in either of our buildings, and so John has been very clear about, even in the last report. I, I don't want to get into specifics because of the litigation, but I do welcome the opportunity for John to come and speak with you all. I know that he has reached out to many of your offices. We can do a workshop about the process of his review of cases in PD and what's included in his quarterly report. We're happy to do that. And maybe that will answer your questions moving forward. And in the meantime, we can meet with you individually with Doug in the room as well.
Well, I think, I think for a purpose of the public, I think that it's important that people understand what is the process and the role. So I, I think that kind of in light of all the circumstances, that we do have a workshop, and you guys present, you know, what is the role? What's the process? Who makes those decisions? You know, because I think from the comments that I made, it's, he made the unilateral decision to not disclose, even though he had finalized certain things because of what his impression was. And so I don't know if that's the best way to go about this, and I think that there's value in the council having a discussion if that process needs to be modified when it comes to releasing information. The last thing that I want to do is continue to perpetuate the, the conversation that we are eroding trust with our police department, given the context of what is happening nationally, and then the impacts of what has occurred in the past for, for our police departments. I think that it's incumbent upon us that if we feel strongly about building trust in our community and addressing those challenges head-on, that we're fully transparent with the public.
I, I want to be clear about a couple of things. We're happy to do a workshop. I'll get that scheduled for the next, next meeting sometime in October. But I, I want to be clear about something. John has the full support of my office. He has been nothing but honest and full of integrity since day one. I watched his response to the police department or to the Reform Commission last week, and his answer could not have been more honest about why he is waiting till October to release the findings, his findings of that in particular case. And so that, to me, is the epitome of integrity. He could not have been more honest about that decision. And we will have a workshop. We'll go over his whole process. He is, he will be very happy to do so, and I'll work and get something scheduled for October.
And I appreciate that, city manager. However, I appreciate that he was honest and that he was upfront, but had there been no commission, we wouldn't have known. And the only reason that that came to light was.
That's actually not true, and John can speak to that, and his, his last report actually showed that that information about that particular case, and then it was closed, and, and his report in October will give more details. And, and hopefully, maybe we can time his workshop with the release of his next report. And I, and I know it has the last quarter report that was issued in July, and, and I'm happy to meet with you with him in the meantime to go over that.
So city manager, if you would allow me, who does the auditor report to?
He reports to me in a very independent capacity. I do not direct him.
So he reports to you, but you have no responsibility over his actions?
He is, Doug, do you want, do you have the resolution about the, the role of the independent auditor handy, so I'm not, I don't have that in front of me? But I, I meet with John, and he updates me on all of his community meetings and his, and his reports, but he is not, he does not get any direction from my office. He is, is truly the definition of independent, and it should be. It should be. He should not be directed by me or the police chief.
My other question is, do, do you know, since he updates you and he reports to you, do you know why he's choosing mid-October to release the report since he's been sitting on it for months now? Why can't he release it today?
His next quarter report. It's, it's, it, it, October is when his next report is due out.
So is there anything that keeps him from releasing it today?
Um, I, it, it's, he does a quarterly report. This is the October quarterly report that's being released. He's packaging it with that like he would. It would be inconsistent if he did anything different.
Well, he's already done something different, which is sit on the report for four months. So my question is, people want to see the report. Is there anything legally or at your direction that keeps him from releasing that report today versus mid-October?
So can we direct the, can we direct staff to release the report if we know it's out there?
Before we get to direction, I just want to know from, from the folks who supervise the auditor or from our legal counsel, whether there's anything that keeps him from releasing the report before mid-October?
Council, first of all, this is not an item on the agenda, so we're, we're limited to what we can do here. Second of all, the manager directs the independent auditor, but that's in a sort of a procedural capacity. She should not be directing substantively what he says. But she can direct him, do your job. She is his boss. But she, she would not be directing, say this or don't say this.
Understood. Councilmember Carbasi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a comment on another issue, but on this issue, this is an extremely serious issue. I think there's a lot of good questions. We have, you know, Matthew called, and I appreciate the comments people have made. I think we have to get clarification before we start going public about our, our interpretation of things. I think we, as a council, and I would encourage the city manager, let the council, if we can do it in a closed session, as representatives of the people, meet directly and ask those questions so we can be better informed. Because the, the last thing we want, we have this great independent police auditor position that was created, and it was a fight to get there. We want to make sure we don't erode the integrity of that role. And I don't recall this situation happening before. This is a, a learning experience. We also have to ensure if policies weren't followed, that we correct those policies. It doesn't happen again. That's my request.
Council President, can I just add to Councilmember Carbasi's comments? I think that he, he's right. Not just the council, but I think the public also. So a refresher in terms of, you know, then the city manager has agreed that to come on, to have a workshop so people know exactly what, what are the expectations, and that we do review what are the policies and protocols, because if something wasn't followed, then we should rectify.
Fair enough. All right, it looks like we've gotten the, the tone of everybody's comments. We will put a, Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor?
A couple of things. You know, the, the comments that were expressed by some folks, our police chief was maligned. I mean, he was called a racist, and, you know, I happen to personally know Chief Hall, and he's the furthest thing from a racist. And I know it's invoked to people you disagree with, you, you call a racist. I often tell people half joking that, you know, I spent over 35 years working as a clinical psychologist in this community, have, what I think has always been very respected in the private sector, as well as at the VA hospitals. I've been an honor to work with veterans and always was respected, and then I entered the arena, and I found out that I'm a racist, a white supremacist, and a death merchant. Who knew? I didn't know. But that's what happens when you enter the political arena. You get called names when people disagree with you. And I take exception. I mean, I've got strong shoulders. I've, I've gotten used to it. But I take great exception when they call somebody like Chief Hall a racist, who's the furthest thing from me. He spent his life defending people in this community and supporting them and protecting them. And so I think it's, it's a disgrace when people do that because they disagree or they don't like phraseology in a, in a, in a press release. So I, I think it's frankly disgusting and a disgrace. As far as this thing that happened with Mr. Glieada, I also want to say that, you know, that he is also a man of integrity. I think he, he probably made a mistake in not releasing something that should have been released. I, I think things should always be released. I understand he was concerned, but those things ought to be released, but I don't think we should, again, attack and malign people simply because we, we disagree with them. I am in support of trying to release whatever report is there and doing it expeditiously. I think we should do it quickly. I don't think we need to wait for the next newsletter or release or his quarterly report. So I do support that, again, because I believe in transparency, and I think the public always has a right to know. But Mr. Glieada is a tremendous man of integrity, and I take exception when people attack his character as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Carbasi?
Council President?
Quickly make a comment before you comment. City Manager, that's okay, on this matter, because I think maybe, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I had another comment that I wanted to finish up. Talking separately now about the statement of the police chief, I did want to mention something. This is a very different era in our country. I know it's an election year. It's an era of cancel culture. And even like, you know, I, I tend to be very careful watching the news today because everything is so negative. It influences me. And I end up speaking without listening, and this is a lesson for myself. And one thing my, my mom always told me is God gave you two ears and one mouth for a reason, and I need to learn to listen. I listened to the statements of the people that called in, and I just want to share some of my experiences. I've been very fortunate to be a council member. I've gotten to know people. When I look at someone, especially in someone like my colleagues or someone in a position where they can actually help people, I don't look at the color of their skin. I look at what's in their heart. Now, I've read this statement several times by the police chief. And I try to understand how someone else may interpret it, and I know that we all have our own feelings about this issue. I'm very angry at what happened to Breonna Taylor, and I'll tell you what, I know Chief Hall is very angry about that too, because I've talked to him about it. And what I will tell you is that when reading the statement, you can pick and choose something that you want to use and say, well, this person's bad because of that statement, but that doesn't mean that's what they actually meant when they wrote it. So I'm going to read the very last sentence, because for me, this is a call to action and a reminder for our police officers, because our police officers, and we have white police officers, Latino police officers, black police officers. White police officers, Latino police officers, black police officers, um, uh, Asian police, not that this should matter, but we have a growing, more diverse police force. But I, when we had the George Floyd protest because of the murder of George Floyd, they were out there making sure people were safe. We were worried about other protesters from the other side coming in and clashing. And they didn't want any of that. They wanted people to exercise their rights. And the other aspect is our chaplaincy went out and actually fed protesters to make sure they were fed. Safe and hydrated because it was, you know, it was because of the timing. So I'm going to read the last sentence. And this goes to the point of community policing, which is the future for this community. We need to get out of our cars and engage with our community. Treat everyone with dignity and respect. Let them know that we are still here to serve and will never abandon them. We are Fresno and this is our family. So that to me is the crux of his message. That was his intent. And I thank him for that intent because we have to move forward to that model. And I know what's in the heart of our police chief. I've said many times before, he's very duty bound. He's also approachable. If, I know that he does listen when he hears things and he is meeting with the community. So I appreciate the people calling in, letting us know as your representatives how you feel. Thank God, in our community, we aren't like other communities. But I know this council is very committed to ensuring this city doesn't fall and that this city provides justice for all and we, and provide safety for all. So thank you.
City manager, would you like to say anything before we move on?
Just going to say that I will work with John and do a workshop on either October fifteenth or the twenty-second. And I'm learning that his actual report for that particular case is not finished. Um, and so I'll update you all, um, as soon as I know what that looks like. But there is a process, there is a process that we follow where the, the report does get legal review as well. So.
So city manager, let's, let's, let's plan for the workshop on the fifteenth and it's also be crystal clear about what the report being complete is. Because, um, it, it seems to me there's quite a bit of mixed messaging. So, um, you know, the video I saw. It was complete months ago. So let's just make sure that when we get to the workshop and that the, the auditor is crystal clear about. When the report was completed and, um, when it'll be released. Thank you. Uh, just, Councilmember Brederfield?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Just, just one final thing. You know, in our community, we've had, uh, thirty-eight, I believe it's thirty-eight murders, uh, to date. Uh, we are far surpassing what, uh, occurred last year. All across our city, uh, uh, people are being killed. We hear about, uh, gunfire every day. Um, I understand there's been an eighty percent increase in shootings since April, a seventy percent increase in stabbings. And, uh, I think this is really what we need to be also focused on. Uh. Uh, our police are the ones out there on the front lines having to deal with this. I mean, there is gunfire, uh, all over the place. And, uh, we need to make our citizens safe. We need to, uh, continue to give, uh, the police the resources to deal with this. We're, we're a city that's having a lot of problems and we're not the only city. Uh, I mean, I, I think a lot of it is when you release. Uh, twenty thousand criminals and you have no bail policies and, and the police will tell you that. I mean, they've arrested people for attempted murder and they've been out within five hours. Uh, you can't have a safe city that way. And, uh, so, uh, we rely on our police, uh, to make our sa- uh, safe and we all know that. And I'm grateful, uh, to them. And I'm grateful to, uh, leaders in our community, our community leaders all over. Uh, who are trying to deal with this now in, uh, southwest, southeast Fresno, uh, actually throughout the entire city. Uh, they're, uh, they're, they're doing. Uh, tough work, uh, because it can't be just the police who, who helped make us safe. Uh, from our pastors to our other community leaders who are, uh, fighting to, to keep, uh, all of us safe. So. Uh, I think we need to keep that in mind that, uh, we, we have some serious, uh, very serious problems facing our, our city. And, um, we have to deal with those as well. Thank you, Council.
Okay, Councilmember. We'll go to Councilmember Chavez for a final word on the item.
Yeah, thank you, President. Um, just wanted to briefly comment on this. I, I appreciate the conversation. I too agree. I think we, I'm looking forward to that. Uh, October fifteenth, uh, workshop so that we can get more clarity and, and, and really specifics on what this process will look like going forward. Uh, for when reports are released. Um, if that's the will of the council, um, then maybe we do them monthly. Maybe we do them quarterly. Um, I'm open to that conversation. But I, I spoke to the chief yesterday and, and I spoke to him because I, I. I had to make a, a statement with regards to the merchants on the Kings Canyon Ventura corridor. As we know, those are the majority of them are Latino, um, small business owners. Um, they've been hit with so many burglaries, um, these past couple of months. To the point where you have COVID situation. They're struggling with the shutdown. Um, they've had to lay off employees, um, cut back on hours. And now we have criminals taking advantage of the situation and burglarizing these facilities. And, and I say that as an example, because I actually checked some of the stats and that's why I called Chief Hall. They have been six hundred criminals released back into our city, uh, since April. And that's something that we have to reconcile as a city. Uh, more importantly, the conversation that we're going to have is what do we expect from our police officers? Do we want them to be proactive and go out there? Or do we want them to wait for calls for service? Um, that's, that's going to be a, a, a very robust, um, and I, I anticipate controversial conversa- conversation. But let's, let's keep in mind that, you know, and, and, and part of this problem has been. The false promise of Prop forty-seven to fifty-seven, if we're being honest, where the rehabilitation part of this conversation never happened. And, and that's a failure on the state's part, right? Where they, they sold us a bag of goods and then did not deliver, uh, on the resources. And so now we're left with the local level having to come up with solutions on what our law enforcement is going to look like. I too support transparency and I support the conversation that we're about to have. Uh, but. Let's keep focused on what the big issue is here. And that is the fact that crime, we're in the middle of a crime wave. Um, and that is not a term that I use loosely, uh, because that's how it's being described here in our city. And we need to really step up and, and prioritize public safety. Um, that's a conversation to be had, but I'm looking forward to that conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember. And with, uh, with that, um, let's stay focused on what's on the agenda. Um, I think we, we, we've pushed the bounds of the Brown Act. And getting a little off topic. So as council vice president would say, let's, let's get back to business and stay in our lanes. So with that, let's stick to the, um, items as identified. We'll go with one S, um, the item. That was pulled from consent for further discussion. It's a five-year agreement with SenCal, uh, on revolving loan fund. So, uh, member Carvazi, be, before I go to you, I'd like, um, staff to present the item. So, um, we'll turn it over to staff and I think Director Room twenty-one, twenty-five, if you can present the item to the council.
Good morning, council members, council president Kelly Trevino with the economic development, um, team. Um, I am here to answer any questions that you have. Uh, as you stated, this is in regards to our current five-year. Agreement contract with SenCal Business Finance Group. So last year we brought to you the agreement with SenCal. Um, you approved it. It was signed last year in November. Um, so we have another four plus years left on that current agreement. So this action that's before you right now is just to amend that agreement to include this CARES Act revolving loan fund. So we were invited, um, due to our A-plus rating with the EDA and our current good standing, um, with our current revolving loan fund, we were invited by the EDA. To apply for a non-competitive grant, a revolving loan fund grant. This is CARES Act money that can only be used for this revolving loan fund. Um, we applied, we were successful and now we need to, uh, we would like to amend our agreement. With SenCal to also administer this grant, this grant, this revolving loan fund grant. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have, but again, this does not extend their current agreement. There are still four month, four years left of that agreement. And this will not change the term, the, the length of that agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve, Council President.
Second. Um, there's motion, questions from the council? Council, I'm sorry, you have the floor.
Just have a couple of questions. One, so this is the only group that could. Essentially disperse the funds? Is that what you're saying? That that's what the grant said?
Um, that was in our application, we proposed to have them, um, also administer this grant due to the unusual and compelling urgency of the funds. We have twenty-four months to get all of the funds loaned out. They are already set up for this, um, so that they can get started right away. They already have about five prospects. Uh, in the queue that are interested in the funding. Um, so we're excited to have them and, and hope to have them get started right away and getting this funding out. We will lose any funding that does not get loaned out within twenty-four months.
Um, what kind of businesses are we looking at, um, in terms of, um. The businesses that are covered under the grant? What are the, what are the amounts? And you said there's five prospect businesses. Can you share, uh, share with us?
Yes.
Who are the prospective businesses?
So it must be a business within the city of Fresno. Um, it must be a business that is having difficulty obtaining other funding and they have to show a nexus that they. Are, have experienced hardship due to COVID and that they're going to use the funds to, um, to respond to the crisis in some way. And to further grow their business and, um, stay viable in this new, uh, COVID environment that we're in. Um, there are four that I'm aware of. I know there were five, but four that I were aware of, I'm aware of that, uh, businesses that were interested and possibly eligible for this funding. Um, a counseling business, a dry cleaner, a southeast Fresno daycare center and a West Fresno clinic. Um, that have expressed interest and, and would be potentially, um, eligible for this.
Are nonprofits also eligible?
No, they are not.
So they're all just business, business. Okay. And, um. How are they going to make sure that our Spanish-speaking, mom, um, type of businesses also have the ability to. Get these gra- um, loans, excuse me?
Right. So, um, SenCal is going to be partnering with a number of our, our community organizations. Um, they're actually going to be developing a, uh. Not a finder's fee, but a, um, referral fee. So, uh, they will meet with the different community organizations, let them know that there will be a referral fee offered. So if, if a referral from one of those organizations results in a closed loan, they will be, uh, able to obtain that referral fee. So it will, it will help them. Um, to get the word out as well.
What is the, um, rate that, um, they're going to be able to loan out?
Uh, prime plus two percent. So we're, we're trying to make this as attractive as possible. Um, and we're waiving the loan fees as well for the businesses.
How, um, how long will it have to be before the business has to pay back the loan?
Um, it depends on the type of loan. Uh, no more than twenty years if it's a real estate loan, but typically five, three to five or up to seven years for the full amortization of the loan.
For this particular loan though? Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you, council. Um, I do have a few questions myself. Wha- what is the current prime rate right now?
I believe it's three point two five percent.
About three percent. So, um, the additional two percent, who, who set that rate? Is that the, the granting entity or is that the organization?
Um, we set that rate with SenCal. Our current revolving loan fund starts at two and a half percent, prime plus two and a half percent and goes up depending on the size of the loan. So a larger loan qualifies for a lower, uh, percentage. But with the CARES Act revolving loan fund, we're setting it at a fixed. Prime plus two to make it more attractive.
Why don't, since, since this is CARES Act money and it's supposed to be going now. And people have to demonstrate that they were impacted. Why are we adding an additional two percent to, to the prime?
I mean, you know, that's, that's up for discussion. The, the goal is to create this revolving loan fund. So as the money's paid back, we have a larger pool of funds to make available to businesses.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. And I understand that in our traditional loan, we do that intentionally to have money to give out in the next five years. But CARES Act is different. CARES Act is supposed to get out immediately, is not supposed to generate us interest or generate SenCal interest or generate. Anybody interest. It's supposed to help businesses. So, so from, from my perspective, um. I, I, I'd rather we, we go and not add an additional two percent, you know, interest rate on these businesses that are really struggling. Um, to get by. So, um, I'd be supportive of the item with the makers of the motion, will simply set the rate at the prime. Um, and, and not add the additional two percent interest rate for businesses.
I, I would, um, I would agree with you. I think, um, given the, the time and the moment, I think it's an opportunity for. Folks to get lower re- I mean, lower interest loans, um, that are struggling. I don't think that if it's not required, we shouldn't. Re- require an additional two percent. I think that that is fair, um, given the circumstances. So.
And, and we're willing to take that back to the EDA and as long as they don't have a problem with it, I, you know, that's, that's at your will.
And then also what about, um, the types of, um, businesses that can be prioritized? Is there a strategy or is it just? Point blank whoever they, they get to decide?
Well, like I said, it's not, nonprofit businesses are not eligible, but other than that, um, we, uh, we want to get this money out, it, the, the money fully out within two years. So it's anyone that's eligible and can demonstrate that they have been negatively impacted by COVID and are going to use the money. To, to help to survive in this environment.
So, so councilwoman, if, if you're okay, I, I'd like to make, uh, an amendment to the motion to, um, remove the additional two percent interest rate. If the granting authority, um, agrees to that, the funding authority. Uh, Councilmember Carvazi?
You said if they, they agree to it. I want to fully understand. I, I want to help people. We, we, you know, you and I, yourself and Councilmember Soria, we did the small business, uh, grant program. But I want to understand if there is no income coming in so that we can have that pot and provide for other businesses. What happens there?
Well, um, in, in this case, Mike, this organization already gets a pot of money from us every year. That they loan now and they get interest and that pot continues to grow and fund itself, right? This just is an additional pot of money from CARES Act. So, um, I, I don't think we should be making money off the CARES Act. I think we should just put it out at the cheapest rate possible, especially if the funding or, um, uh, funding entity agrees to that. So, um, I, if, if you recall, in most of our discussions around small business relief, the, the federal government has said. You have to put it in the form of a grant. You have to not make it difficult. Don't put conditions, put it out. So I, I just like to give people an additional, you know, break if, if, if there's no need for it, why charge them an additional two percent? We already have a revolving fund with them. And at any time, this council can say, take one-time money and put more money into that revol- revolving fund.
Got it. So we're, we'll check with legal to make sure it's kosher. And then of course, you, your, your, your motion was.
My, my motion is, is simply.
Contingent upon there?
Yes, um, um, amend the item to approve it, um, at the prime rate only, um, contingent on the funding entity, um, of, um, authorizing it.
Well, so what if they say they don't want to do it? That's the thing. Like, I think that if it's not required, we should say this should be the way.
Agency is not SenCal, but the federal government who's giving us the money.
But, so it, it was just told to us though that we can do it, that that's just being added because that was their agreement.
They, they just indicated that they wanted to confirm with EDA that that's possible. So, so my attempt is very simple. If the EDA, which is a federal government, doesn't require the additional two percent, then we should not add the additional two percent to grantees and, um, and move on with that. So that's my amendment to approve the item contingent on not charging the additional two percent if the funding entity, EDA, in this case approves of that.
Council President, I'll accept that amendment.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, are you good with that as a second maker of the motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, let me go to, um, public comment on the item. Anybody in the public wishing to comment on this revolving loan fund, uh, opportunity for small businesses? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. If there's no other comments, we'll go to roll call.
Excuse me, Councilmember Brederfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Hi.
Councilmember Cravasi?
Hi.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Vice President Caprielia?
Yes.
President Arius?
Yes, thank you. All right, council, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. That'll be for B as in boy, an intro- a bill for introduction, adoption, uh, adopting. As an emergency order, a business is essential to local, it can, it can, economy.
Council President, I'm sorry, the custom agenda is incorrect. Four B on the regular agenda is the PBIT item.
Oh. Okay. So what item are we on then, since?
Yeah, four B is resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to conduct a competitive solicitation process. For a consultant to explore a property-based improvement district for central and southern Blackstone Avenue. And that is 73.
Yeah, Council President, that's my, that's my item. So the items are 4B and 4D. So I'll go, I'll go ahead and proceed with 4B, which is the PBIT item. This is just another, another one of our efforts on Blackstone and our redevelopment efforts. Property based business improvement district. We allocated some dollars in the budget this summer in order to explore what a PBIT would look like on Blackstone to conduct outreach. And so this is just initiating that process and having the administration take the appropriate steps to find the consultants and get the projects going. So I do want to make a motion to approve with, with one amendment, really just to be more specific. The language indicates that it's the central southern part of Blackstone. What I want to be clear on is that we're looking at the portion of Blackstone that is targeted in the southern Blackstone mobility strategy. So roughly from Dakota down through the 180, that portion of Blackstone.
I'll second that.
All right, let me go out to a public. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the item on the correct 4B, which is authorizing the director, the directing city manager to conduct a competitive solicitation process? I'll go out to a public. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. We'll go to roll call.
Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Krevasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
President Arius?
Yes. The next item is 4D as in David. It is a resolution declaring that all residents of City of Fresno have been demontably impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. Counsel, this is a recommendation by our legal counsel, our mayor and our council committee on COVID. Essentially by authorizing this resolution, we make it easier when there's food distribution events taking place that we don't have to get a affidavit that every single person is, you know, impacted by COVID. So it makes the distribution of our food relief efforts easier for residents who are lining up and trying to get some food and resources from the city. Let me take it. Do you have a motion to approve the item?
Motion to approve, but you have a question for it though.
Sure. A motion by member Chavez, second by member Soria. Let me go to the public for a moment. Anybody in public wishing to address this item? Doesn't look like we have any today.
Brandy, Brandy's hand up.
Oh, there we go. Brandy, you are allowed to address the council on this item.
Very briefly, I, I just want to thank you again for every effort that you guys are making to provide resources for our community during this time. And thank you very much for that, as well as all the other items today that have been done in support of our community. Thank you.
Great. We'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
Yeah, this is just a question for, for Doug. And obviously, you know, we know that the pandemic has hit, you know, the majority of, of, of the city and, and procedurally we're working on this. But there is the concern that there are people that have not been directly affected by COVID would want to use this clause to take advantage of resources or forbearance. So Doug, with the language that we have here, does that ensure that people that have not been affected by COVID don't invoke this and, and take advantage of this? I sent you some language that I had chatted, I think, to you and Katie. Would that be appropriate to include to clarify that? Or does that do it for this ordinance?
Well, even without clarification, I would say that, you know, people would still need to comply with the terms of any specific grant or program that we have. In other words, this does not open up every program to anybody without the qualification required for that specific program.
Right. So, so that language that we included for the, the CARES Act funding in section three, would, would that be appropriate? Or are you comfortable with this language that we currently have in place? So that, and here's the example I want to give, you know, the, the person making $150,000 that refuses to pay their rent or utility cannot invoke this clause because obviously they haven't been affected.
No, we would not need to change it for that to be the case. In other words, this does not open up every program for everybody. This is more general.
Got it. I just wanted to get that on the record to make sure that we're, we're, we're good on that.
Correct.
All right, council, with that, roll call please.
Councilmember Brettafeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparza?
Aye.
Councilmember Krevasi?
Aye.
Councilmember Soria?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thanks. Vice President Capriolio?
Yes.
And President Arius?
Yes. All right, council, it looks like we're done with our agenda for this morning. We will go into lunch break. I'll see you back at 1 o'clock for the 1 o'clock item. After that item, we'll reconvene for a closed session.
Council, Council President, if I may, I have a 1 o'clock medical appointment for my $17,000 new college shot to keep me breathing. So I don't think I'll be here at that time. And then I have a 3:30 appointment to excise some, a little bit of cancer off my back. So I might not be able to get back here this afternoon.
That's fair. Thank you for being here in person today.
Well, I appreciate it. And I think that was the fastest meeting on record.
Yes. We, we created our council vice president for the quick meeting. And I do thank you guys for allowing me to take a break today. We did do the groundbreaking for the, you know, Kingdom of Asia, which is going to be an amazing addition to the Fresno Chaffee Zoo. So thank you for allowing me that break and council vice.
If you want to take a break next meeting, let me know. Have a meeting after that.
All right. We'll see you back at 1 o'clock and we'll see you next time, council vice president. Good luck with your medical appointments.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Paul, good luck, Paul.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll buy you some time. So I'm just going to see if Councilmembers Sparza can chime in so we can get going. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Chavez, I think you're in and out on your video. So we're going to go ahead and proceed with the item. The next item is the 1 o'clock item. And I will go ahead and share my screen really quick so we can start that process. One second here.
And Council, Council President, just a reminder, this is for introduction today, right? Taking a vote.
Yeah. So let me just get here really quick. So as a reminder for the public, the city council adopted, initiated the process of this item approximately a year ago. Today is an introduction of the item. It will be heard for consideration of approval on October 15th. We are simply going to hear the item today. There will be no vote on the item. And we will also take some public comments on this item. As a quick reminder for everyone, in 2019, we conducted a pilot inspection program of ABC license holders. And we identified a lot of violations, either because people didn't know what their CUPs outlined or they were not following their CUPs. As you know, we've gotten to a point of significant saturation. So I'll try to go through this quickly to not delay the rest of the meeting. But there's a long history of how we got here, everything from the grandfathering of all the CUPs in 1993 when Mayor Patterson was here and we had a different group of folks in the planning department, as well as, you know, several approvals that took place after that period of time. It's been very clear and national news that we have significant licenses and saturation in the city. We also have a significant amount of DUIs in the city. In 2012, our youth in the city started to advocate for a difference in policy led by the Youth Leadership Institute, which joins us as a public speaker today. We also got advocacy from the association that represent convenience stores as well and gas stations in 2013. And the city did take some initial action in 2016 with some limitations on signage for storefronts of those having ABC licenses. And of course, they've made some attempts to try and get their hands around this effort that had failed in the past. And since then, we have been engaged in a couple of lawsuits as a result of utilizing the public convenience provision for adding additional licenses in already saturated areas. So it's been a long journey. This again just reminds us that in April of last year, the council did initiate the process to initiate this, this work in a unanimous vote. This is the evidence of the highest concentration of alcohol licenses in the state of California. As you can see, the state identifies a percentage of one license for every 2,500 residents. It's no secret that in some of our neighborhoods, we have one license for every 300 residents. So the saturation has been taking place for years. And they all, of course, result in a lot of calls for service from our public safety resources. The Youth Leadership Institute has done their part in doing the research, surveying, talking to residents and advocating for changes in policy. So I do want to give them a shout out. They've done a really good job of staying focused. Whether young people come in and out of the program, they have continued to carry this, you know, flag on asking for reforms that improve our neighborhoods. The overall goal of this policy that's been just introduced today for, for a hearing is to improve the neighborhood quality of life while supporting the small businesses that have been operating with the licenses that have been given in the past. So I want to be really clear that we are trying to ensure that we set a citywide policy that leads to a decrease in saturation over time versus a, the heavy hand of government, as my colleague would say, that results in, you know, shutting down businesses overnight. So for existing businesses, this would not result in any difference of their current operation. They would continue to operate as is. They would just, that does not require them to apply for a new conditional use permit. It also does not, that thousand foot buffer does not apply to them. Because if you could imagine, if you've had a store in the same location for 20 years that the city asks you to move it 500 feet somewhere else, it would result in a huge devastation to your business. It does have every business in the city participate in the city inspection program that we are co-developing with the association. For new businesses, it allows for new licenses to continue in the city while ensuring that new businesses and development help us reduce saturation over time by buying additional licenses in saturated areas and retiring those licenses. It does set a 5% signage limit for all businesses new and existing. It also provides a thousand foot buffer from sensitive locations in saturated areas. And then, of course, new businesses would also participate in the city inspection program that's designed to be proactive and educational. So everybody knows whether the ever changing rules at the state and local level. So their businesses continue to be in compliance. As a result, we, of this work, we also recommended the establishment of the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act Committee. Their goal is going to be to review the implementation of this act, advise us on any changes, evaluate the citywide ratio of alcohol licenses to ensure that if we are making significant strides, we make adjustments to the policy and not just wait for it to occur. So the resolution that is included in your backup material requires that this committee, six months prior to the city reaching the ratio of the state average, come back with recommended revisions to the act to ensure that there's enough time to put those changes in place. As you know, it takes quite a bit of, of time to get through the city process. The, the membership of the committee would be four members of the public appointed by council members in saturated areas, three members appointed by the association, one member appointed by the mayor, and then one member appointed by a youth organization. In this case, Youth Leadership Institute is our partner organization. So this membership, this committee would be advising us on the implementation. Also, this committee would get referrals of any business that was identified for violations. That business would be referred to this committee for advice before the city takes any disciplinary or revocation procedures. So we're trying to make sure we have the right system in place to educate, inform, and support small businesses before they get to the point of having to deal with a city fine or consequences that could be as severe as a revocation of a CUP. With that, the last time that we were before you, in April of 2019, we committed to completing, completing the environmental review. That was done, developing inspection program, which we have started that process with the association. It's gone through every district implementation committee with no opposition from the committees. It's gone to the County Airport Line Use Commission and the City Planning Commission. Both entities supported and approved the, these, this act as drafted. And now we're back to you for a hearing. I wanted to also be very clear about the non substantial revisions that we've made since it's been heard through all these committees. As you can imagine, once we publish the final document through the planning commission, we get a lot of additional feedback. And we try to incorporate as much feedback and provide clarity and identify things that we didn't think about a year ago when we started this process. The market, COVID, a lot of things have shifted. So we did add some additional clarifications. These are the sections. We added some references of exemptions listed on section D2. We also are allowing the establishments to expand their floor area for non-alcohol related retail to retain their existing CUP. So I want to spend a moment just on that. What we're trying to do is ensure that a current business who wants to expand their business but doesn't want to expand the area of alcohol sales can, can do so. Because we want that reinvestment back into the area without having to go through the process of buying additional licenses or having to update their CUP or amended. We also included some restrictions around some language clarifying that if you're an establishment near a trail system that's not adjacent to public parks, then that's not a sensitive use. So we wanted to clear that up for some of our new development areas. We also included some language around the 500 foot distance between establishments. If you're not in a saturated area of the city, then the 500 foot limit would apply. The thousand foot limit applies if you are in a saturated area. Because we want to make sure that we're not continuing to oversaturate the areas that are very saturated already. Additionally, we put in some language to clarify that if you're an operating business in good standing and you are switching ownership of the business or transferring the license from a franchisee, that this, you wouldn't have to go through a process of buying additional licenses. Because again, we want to make sure that we're cognitive of the existing businesses and align them to improve. We also added some language to ensure that if you're making improvements to your business, for example, if you're a gas station and you're replacing your canopy, if you're replacing windows, you're making improvements to your building, that this process wouldn't apply to you because we want that reinvestment back into the area. We also added some additional language around four packs to three packs. So these are all the changes. Again, they are non substantial revisions, but they do strengthen the act and they provide us the, the clarification that a lot of our stakeholders, stakeholders have been asking for. So just again to the council, our next step is to, now that we've completed the year process, now that we've gotten feedback from a lot of stakeholders, we're hearing it today. Our, our intent is to take the next step and consider adoption on August, October 15th. Between now and October 15th, we're going to continue to obtain feedback from stakeholders and, you know, strengthen the, the policy and make whatever adjustments we feel would be in the best interest of the city and of all the stakeholders that we interact with. So with that, council, if I may, I'm going to unshare my screen now so that I can go to a public comment before we bring it back to the council. And again, this is an item that does not require a vote at this time, as it is simply an introduction. Let me go to the first speaker, Andy. You are being unmuted. You can address the council on this item.
Hey, good afternoon, gentlemen. I hope everybody's safe down in the city during these COVID time. I want to make a few comments down here. We were very pleased to work with the council members. Mr. Arias and Nelsons and Luis Charri's office worked over almost a year on this one. There were a lot of different things that could have hurt a lot of small businesses. We do appreciate them bringing us on the table and taking our inputs. There are a lot of corrections made to this one. We came to the city seven, eight years back about drinking. We were being the drunkest city. We came to the city seven, eight years back about drinking. We were being the drunkest city in in the entire nation. We came again the next year. We were asking city councils that time to make some strong measures to clean our image and how our next generations are coming up. We are business people. We looked at the city interests. We gave our input looking at both sides. I do believe that some of these things in three to four years' time, though, saturation, it could bring that issue back to close. And the city could go back and start doing business as other cities are doing it. Eight, nine years back, even we were coming down and restricting and asking people having four liquor stores at one corner, four gas stations for four corners, it's not going to help anybody. There there were plenty of other choices down there, but city had adopted whatever they did, and we can't go back and change it. But I do appreciate that when lawmakers and legislators bring people on table, and especially the people in the businesses and people who are going to be impacted by their decision, I do appreciate and I do welcome all of you guys to add those people back on to the table to take their inputs and then do the best what is best for the city. We are not expert of what city needs to do. We are an expert of our industry and how to solve problems of the city. With a bunch of these changes, we are supporting it as whatever it takes from our side and city council as a council members and team. You guys would have to do whatever other languages you would have to make sure to protect any other business or for to protect the city.
Thank you, Andy. And thank you for your year-long effort and all the means that we've had to engage in over the last year and all your members. I know prior to COVID, there was eight, ten of us in the same room for hours and hours going through every potential challenge that we saw. And you guys have continued to be at the forefront of putting the city's best interest at hand. With that, let me go to the next speaker, George Beal. George, I think you're muted now. You have the floor. George, can you hear us?
Mr. President, members of the city council, I'm George Beal. My address is eleven seventy-five Shaw Avenue, City of Clovis. I'd like to address a couple of items on the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act. And after listening to Mr. Arias's opening statement, some of the items may be on there already that he has addressed. But let me just go through it. One thing I'm a big fan of is enforce the codes and rules and regulations that are on the books. I think everybody tries to do something new and they've already had the tools to do it. All of the items the city is trying to change and enforce is defined in the California Business and Professional Code and in the in existing and new ordinances. Speaking with ABC, they will only enforce the state law. That's that's required by the ABC regulations. The state has rules to govern how many licenses for selling beer, wine, and distilled liquors can be granted in the community. A formula that's in the state's business professional code says the number should be one for every twelve hundred and fifty residents. In Fresno, that would be like four hundred and sixteen also licenses. Fresno, however, has four hundred and sixty-eight, fifty-two more than specific by former of the law. As of two thousand sixteen, to serve five hundred and twenty-two residents. I took that out of what I printed off from the city. Those things have changed since two thousand sixteen. The residents probably increased and the licenses probably increased. But we should leave the distances for parks, schools, and that type of item. The five hundred feet between for the type twenty and twenty licenses. And the council member said that it's only in saturated, just saturated areas now or saturated census tracts, but that really is all of Fresno in most cases. It should be determined what census tract exceeds the number of licenses allowed and put a plan together to reduce the licenses in those census tracts. And I I think, you know, rather than paint the city with the whole brush with a big brush, I think that would be one approach, break it down into smaller a smaller project and we can deal with that. If a person wants to build a new facility, needs a type twenty, twenty-one license, and the census tract exceeds the allowable number of licenses, they should be able to buy another license, a license from a census tract that's made up of that councilperson's district if the councilperson agrees. If there's fifteen census tracts or twenty census tracts, that license, instead of limiting it to a census tract, which is really pretty tough to buy a license in a census tract, it's not about the money in many cases. It's that.
Do you want to conclude your comments?
Heightly hood. If he gets two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a a license and the guy's making seventy thousand a year out of his business, why would he want to sell? And that, I think that would open it up and help existing business owners to work expansion. This would help reduce licenses within a councilperson's history. This has become a very highly regulated business. People that have been in the business for twenty, business for many years still try to operate the same way they did twenty-five years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Thank you for your comments. The next person is Serge. Serge, you are being unmuted. You have the floor.
I'd like to thank everybody here for working with us. We we've been going to the city for a very long time to talk about the proliferation of of liquor and beer and wine, especially in in southern southern Fresno, where in some corners you have four stores, sometimes more in one corner, and that's not healthy for the city. We were the drunkest city for for many years. We're still in the top ten. And we started this process to clean up the city, to make it less drunk, to make beers that are cheaper than water. We can buy beer at eighty-nine cents. We cannot buy buy a bottle of water for eighty-nine cents today. And we said enough is enough. We as business people, we came to the city and we approached you for years now, and we said we need to fix this. And I think we didn't get everything we want. This 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 bill is very fair. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for taking taking consideration a lot of our concerns and fears. But I think I think this is a very fair beer, a very fair bill, and we would like to proceed with it.
Thank you, sir. The next person is Raj. Raj, you are being unmuted. You have the floor.
Hey, thank you, council member. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. There's two things that I wanted to speak about. Is one thing is implementing this this in the next couple of months. I would suggest that, or I would request that it should be delayed a little bit because the person like me, we made our investments thinking of that this is going, this is not coming as quickly as it did. And one thing is that implementing it a little bit further down and do not impact the what's already in the filing with the city. And the second thing is I wanted to talk about the upgrading from license twenty-two, twenty-one. It will give actually a city an opportunity. If somebody is upgrading the Fresno city license from twenty to twenty-one, it will give the city opportunity to suspend the existing twenty. That will that will help us to reduce those licenses from the city. If if that particular location upgrade that and the existing twenty-one is removed out of service, that will bring the number down. So those were my two suggestions. It will help us for with our investments because we didn't see this going to be as far as I'm thinking that it would be impact implemented within the next couple of months.
Thank you. Thank you, Raj, for calling in. The next person is Darius Assimi. You have the floor.
Okay. Good afternoon, Council President and and members of the council. First of all, I have no interest in alcohol sales or being involved in alcohol sales, but want to see a vibrant Fresno and support removing blight from our city. In my opinion, a yes vote will monopolize current liquor stores regardless of their blight or condition. I'm glad to see the new amendments that are made about using the current laws on books to look at the conditions of our current liquor stores. This also, in my opinion, will benefit corporate America and rich folks to the detriment of young entrepreneurs. And I will get that get to that in a minute. These votes have consequences and will impact our community adversely, in my opinion. The new model for grocery stores is a four thousand square foot market, could be a convenience store, has fresh produce, deli, sandwich shops, dine-in, that also sells alcohol, from what I understand, to to make their business model work. These could be built anywhere in the city, including next door to a liquor store. My due act will prohibit these from getting built within a thousand feet of existing stores or liquors, places that that sell alcohol. The general plan calls for a more walkable city. This new type of grocery store that can pop up all over town is more neighborhood friendly, and I want to see that. I want to see more grocery stores that are that make our community more walkable. And and local entrepreneurs can, along with national chains, can build these. This act, the way it's set up, will carve out the local folks to the benefit of corporate America because the local entrepreneurs won't have won't have the funds or are are won't be able to afford the two to three hundred thousand dollars needed to buy a license. We're still suffering from the pains that COVID has induced in our city with many stores closed for good. You're now adding more regulation to stop building grocery stores, especially in underserved areas. There are many shopping centers that are being that are becoming empty, except for the liquor and the smoke shops. Imagine someone trying to open up a four thousand square foot grocery store in Phil or in parts of town that really need the grocery stores in the same same strip mall. This act will prohibit that new grocery store for opening up in an existing strip mall in an underserved area that happens to be next door to an existing liquor store. To, by the way, to get to one in twenty-five hundred ratio, if the math that I've heard from many experts over the last few weeks is correct, you have to retire over two hundred licenses. Fresno gives out under ten licenses per year. So that will take over twenty years to get to this goal. And from what I understand, the state has flexibility where there's one in twenty-five hundred population versus one in twelve fifty. But finally, my company and I have built in Fresno for over forty years. We put our muddy where our mouth is. We've invested in residential, multifamily, downtown, infill development, university development, and commercial. Your act has a lot of great intentions, and I wholly support the intent and the spirit of the act. You're removing blight and removing, you know, blighted neighborhoods and liquor stores and and that that fall under that category. But it needs more details to make it more fortified and more palatable for our community. I I urge you to speak with folks that love and care about our city and have the experience and and make have the right recommendation and make the right recommendations so we don't have unintended consequences that can set our city backwards. And I thank you so much for your consideration, and I look forward to hearing future amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Assimi. The next person is Dale. Dale, you're unmuted. We'll move on to the next person. Sam?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, now I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Mr. President and council members here to talk and and agree and support Mr. Assimi as well as Mr. Beal on the impacts that we see happening with the the additional language here. And the the good intent that's presented is is not being fulfilled by restricting the general population from driving somewhere and and acquiring liquor at a different location than other than the other than the community store they may be by or close to. The walkable environment, the business enterprises that are impacted as as addressed by Mr. Assimi, I think we need to look at that as a whole and not say just as a general blanket impact on the community. This is going to have a significant impact over the current laws that are out there. The effort that was made to clean up the environment around each of these stores changed the signage and allow a better utilization of currently what's on the books instead of adding more restrictions, I think is something that needs to be reconsidered. What currently is there to be able to affect the what is being proposed at this time? The five hundred-foot or a thousand-foot separation is not going to change a person that's interested in buying alcohol to get in their car and drive further now to purchase that alcohol and come back and then return to the residence business or whatever it is. I think some of those restrictions won't have the effect that's intended and that needs to be reconsidered and and what all this effect actually comes back again to that private business owner.
Thank you.
All businessman that wants to move forward in his effort.
The next person is Sam. Sam, you have the floor.
My name is Sam Bogdanovich. I'm one of the owners of Commercial Retail Associates, a Fresno-based commercial real estate company that's been in business for close to thirty years. My company represents many national tenants throughout the Central Valley and the Central Coast. Our company's clients range from Costco, Save Mart, and Seven-Eleven to Les Schwab Tires, In-N-Out Burger, Chipotle, and Starbucks. We also lease shopping center, shopping centers in the same geographic areas. Locally, I have been Ed Cassian's retail consultant for several years and currently work on River Park, Campus Point, and Panter Creek. I have a very thorough understanding of what's going on in the retail world in our city. I'm here to talk about an unintended consequence of the ordinance, if passed as is, and suggest that we continue the discussion. As we all know, our world has been turned upside down with COVID nineteen. The retail landscape hasn't changed or evolved this quickly in the twenty-four years I've been in commercial real estate like it has in a mere six or seven months since this started. We are seeing companies fail that we never thought would have other would and others coming out of this stronger than before and on and online only. Yet we still don't know who's going to be around when the dust settles. Most of the tenants in our neighborhood shopping centers aren't chains and have spent their life savings staying afloat. My fear is in six months, our neighborhood shopping centers are empty. If we impose such strict guidelines on opening neighborhood markets, some of the smaller strip centers will be left with liquor stores with many spaces sitting empty.
Thank you, Sam. Next person is Cody. Cody, you're being unmuted. You have the floor.
I kind of wanted to piggyback off of what Dale was saying. I'm looking at two maps right now. One is the ABC Liquor Licenses in Fresno. The other is the Fresno COG VMT map. And I'm showing that when you spread out these liquor licenses, it will raise the VMT. And so I just wanted to bring that up as well, that that's also an unintended consequence of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Next person is Richard. Richard, please identify yourself. You've been unmuted. Richard, going once, going twice. I think you just muted yourself again. Richard, can you hear us? All right, we'll move on to the next person. Lisa, you are unmuted. You have the floor.
Hi. I actually like your changes. You know, as a member of the public, I don't own a business. I don't own a liquor business or a strip mall or any of that, but as a member of the community, you know, the further west, the further south you go in Fresno, the more liquor stores you see. The further north you go, the less amount of liquor stores you see on every corner. So I look at this as a good thing and also too, if you pass it and you change it, great, fabulous. And if it needs to be tweaked and things aren't working out, you know, the business community can always come to the council and ask for it to be tweaked, right? So let's just move forward. Because, you know, I have just seen an inundation of, you know, these liquor stores with cheap wine in poorer communities and what it has done to poorer communities. You know, we have, you know, food deserts in West Fresno. When was the last time Assimi ever, you know, built a grocery store in West Fresno? You know, somebody needs to answer that for me. I'll wait. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we're done with public comment. I do want to go to one person who's been a partner like the association has, Jose. I'm going to unmute you if you want to address the council on behalf of the young people. Council, we set this up for one o'clock. As you know, most of our high school kids are doing online work, so we're hoping to be able to adjust for their schedules. A lot of them are still occupied doing their online schooling, so I wanted to give Jose an opportunity to address the council as he has been and the youth have been at the table with us for the last year on this matter. Jose?
Perfect. Can you hear me, Council President?
Perfect. Can you hear me, Council President Arias? Thank you so much. It's great to see the mayor, I mean, everyone on the council. I am staff at the Youth Leadership Institute here in the city of Fresno. I want to thank Council President Arias, Council Member Esparza, and Chavez for really championing this ordinance. So young people, as Council President Arias mentioned earlier, have been working from the Friday Night Live program, which is to be able to reduce alcohol and drug use amongst minors. I've been working on this since two thousand and twelve, informing the council. So some of the biggest issues that young people have seen through data that they've collected has been saturation, accessibility, and a lack of accountability for liquor stores. As you heard earlier, California requires, you know, one liquor store for every, no more than every twenty-five-hundred residents. South of Shaw, we have one for every five hundred residents. We realize that access of sensitive use areas such as parks and schools and preschools has been an issue because that's where young people play. That's where young people get educated. And so when there's accessibility and there's, it's a Friday night and young people are looking to access alcohol, that walking distance from right outside of their school or right from the park, it makes it a lot easier for them to access it when it is out of walking distance. Whereas a young person who's under eighteen or is still in high school has to drive out of their way to really access it. And so accessibility through this will be able to remove, having these parameters in place of being able to have a longer distance from these sensitive use areas will really address that issue of accessibility being too close to young people. The other piece is the advertisements. We realize that in the, the work that young people have been doing, that advertisements play a huge role subconsciously of what they see every day, especially if they go to a school that, you know, we have parts in Fresno where there's three liquor stores that are, you know, right across the street from, you know, a high school. And so what they see every day really plays a role subconsciously as well. And then having this inspection program, we realize that one of those things, for example, one of the issues is shoulder tapping, where young people will sometimes stand outside of a liquor store and actually ask somebody to get alcohol for them. And so having this inspection program that's being included in here really addresses that too, because it also means that liquor stores will be held accountable to make sure that they are selling legally and that, that really young people, getting into the hands of young people is, can be prevented as much as possible. And as mentioned earlier, I know Serge got to mention this. There are certain parts of Fresno where alcohol is cheaper than water. So we know that accessibility against a young people through price is also more easily accessible to them because of the saturation issue. And I just want to thank lastly so much Council President Arias, Esparza, and Chavez for championing this, bringing the right partners to the table. And I know that it's been over a year of just a ton of conversations. And so just encourage the council to, to really, this, this ordinance will help really address the issue of access to young people. And I apologize, our young people weren't able to join the cause. As Council President Arias said, they're still in school right now, but I just want to thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jose, and thank the young people on our behalf. With that, council, I'd like to bring it back for questions from the council. If there's none, then this, again, is just an introduction item. It'll be brought back on October fifteenth and where we are continuing to commit to all the stakeholders, those who called today, those who've been, we've been working with for, for a year, to continue to refine this act to ensure that it meets the intention and the best interest of the city. So just as a quick note, when we start this process, one of the first means I had was, was with the Director of ABC at the state. I actually drove to Sacramento prior to COVID and looked at all the data, evaluated all the options, and they were fully supportive of our approach to do some additional mitigation and to ensure that there was a market for grocery stores. And we are very sensitive to the fact that the market is shifting around full-service, you know, fifty, sixty thousand square foot grocery stores. You should know that we actually want the smaller footprint grocery stores in our neighborhoods. That's what people want. I, I have the luxury of having one next door. I know what it means to have a grocery store next door and reduce the amount of Costco trips that we take as a family up to North Fresno. So we will continue to work on this and to make sure that we can provide any clarity and reassurance to any of the stakeholders who call today and those who we continue to work with. So unless there's questions from the council, I'd like to move on to the next item. All right, Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, in, in terms of the issues that were raised by some of the folks, how do you plan on making any changes to this ordinance in relation to the, I mean, because some of them seem like very reasonable and thoughtful concerns?
What we've seen, Councilmember Brettafield, is we've been getting some, you know, questions and, and some input. That's why you saw the two pages of changes that we've made already, since this, this was approved by the planning commission. We're still going through some of that. We've had additional conversations up to this morning. So I, I intend to continue doing the same thing that we've done, is make adjustments where it makes sense for neighborhoods, but we're also being very clear that what we're trying to do is reduce saturation, not move saturation from the inner city to the outer city, which is something that we've got to be aware of, because as you know, some of the quote-unquote unsaturated zip codes are at the edges of development. Essentially, in my area is Clinton and Blythe. And those folks who bought new subdivisions and new homes, they don't want to see the saturation replicated in their parts of town. So we're trying to be thoughtful of looking for all the unintended consequences. And I know from Councilmember Chavez and Esparza, we're all committed to see more grocery stores, even if there's smaller footprints inside the parts of the, of the food deserts that we have. So we'll continue to do what we've done, is make adjustments, refine things, make sure that if there's existing language in the code that already does that, and I'll give you an example. When the four thousand square foot grocery store question was brought to our attention, we had our legal counsel review not only this act, but all the other existing municipal code. And they're comfortable that our grocery stores, how we define them in general, general market, healthy food grocer and specialty food grocers already provide the necessary protections to encourage those kind of grocery stores to come in versus discouraged. So we're going to continue communicating and talking with everyone and making sure folks understand the intention and the language, and if refinement is required, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah, Councilmember Brettafield, to, to piggyback off that answer, you know, we're, we're going to continue to listen to folks and incorporate the components that, that make sense for this and, and but continue the spirit of the legislation. But we, we've got to be cognizant as well that any changes we make cannot be considered substantial changes that trigger us, so go back to the drawing board and reinitiate the, the long process that, that it's already gone through. So, you know, we're, we're looking to the city attorney, right, to answer questions in terms of what is considered substantial versus non-substantial and will we re-trigger the process?
Fair enough.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Karbasi, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to say about this bill, I want to thank the council president for bringing it forward and all the work and working with so many stakeholders. It's not easy. I think the intent of this bill is very pure and it can do a lot of good. And the fact that we're targeting the unintended consequences is going to make this a much better bill when we actually vote on this matter. So I appreciate your openness and your willingness to improve things in our communities.
Thank you, council member. If that is all from the council, I'd like to go back to item, the ten-twenty item, and ask for reconsideration. I wasn't here when this item was voted on, so I would need a motion from the winning side to reconsider.
I would like to make a motion, even though that wasn't grabbed to me at the consent last week, but I'd like to make a motion for you to consider that.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. I owe you one, so it's, it's on the record. Is there a second for Councilmember?
This is for.
Yeah, the animal shelter.
Oh, okay.
All right. Yes, let's do a roll call for the reconsideration. City clerk, the motion is to reconsider the ten-twenty joint item of the financing powers related to the animal shelter.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Esparza?
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Hi.
Councilmember Soria?
So is the reconsideration for just discussion or what?
The council vote, just the council vote, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Council, oh.
Yes.
Council President Arias, thank you.
All right, council, thank you for, for, for the reconsideration. The record is clear. I owe Councilmember Brettafield the, the same courtesy next year. The only question I had staff is, we've been talking about the animal shelter in the terms of a fifty million dollar project, and what's on this item today is a twenty-two million dollar project. So I wanted to give staff an opportunity to explain to the public why there's the difference between the fifty million we've been discussing thus far, which I believe is related to the building, and the total price of twenty-two million.
That's all.
We got to be able to hear you, Mr. City Controller. Hey, Mayor, how are you?
You're muted.
Mike, let's see.
Terrible.
I heard that, Louise. Hey, Mayor, now you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, well, there's, the original cost, we had a facility, an existing facility we're going to remodel, I think, by, by ninety-nine. If my recollection, Jim can probably correct me, was, you know, fifteen million dollars plus. And then when Mr. Cashion got involved and was willing to, you know, buy a parcel, we looked at different locations, including another one by Golden State Boulevard. But ultimately, the one by the Gap was the best location, which that was, I think, a, a cost of about one dollar for the land itself. But when you add the cost of, the soft cost of in, in engineering cost to the project, when you go into bond fees and, and commissions, you go into materials, costs rising dramatically, you do what they call capitalized interest, that's basically a construction loan. So those combined, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but one of the reasons the cost went up, we looked at stuff a year ago with Darryl Ridenhour on this forty, fifty million dollars in costs. So this came in originally in the, and the thing was presented by Tim Simons originally in, I think, the fifteen to sixteen, seventeen million dollar price range. And then we had our people, Scott Moser and Jim and others, go through and do, make some corrections to make the engineering proper. But those are the factors primarily that escalated the cost. But I believe that the cost of twenty-two million for what we're getting is a good bargain. And Jim, you can, also, we added some features on, for example, there was no clinic for spade and neuters that was on, on the original design. So those are some of the other things that added to the cost. And Jim or Mike, let me film in right left out.
That's pretty bad.
I, I, I think this is karma, Mike, for, for, for all the times you gave us a hard time about spending carezak dollars. So a, anybody in the city manager's office have an audio that works or, or?
Oh, I'll be.
Let's see if we can get this thing here. Give you guys two seconds. Mike, you're welcome to come into my office and, you know, use my audio. Or any of you guys can come over and explain it to us. I, I wouldn't, I'm happy you accept it's a lot of money. So, you know, we want to be clear about the seven million dollar difference. You can wear a mask.
This is a move to increase IT's budget. I think this is all about.
No, this, this isn't a move to decrease our budget.
If somebody wants to come to the library, it works in here.
Did you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you perfectly, Mayor.
City Council Chamber works pretty good, too.
What about Councilmember Chavez? Does your internet bill, did you pay that bill? Does it work?
It's working. Got a hot spot. Hey, what, what if we just have them call in on the phone and leave the camera on and we can hear the audio but see him talking? Creative solution.
Yeah.
Leave it up to the millennia to find a workaround to IT. They'll, they're, they're, they're moving to libraries. I just give them two seconds and they'll be up and running. Mayor, do, while we're waiting, do you have a, a schedule for construction? Do we know when, when that is?
We've been working, you know, you guys approved the amendment last week with the Quering Construction will join Tim Simons. And Hall Quering has got a great reputation. He's got a, he's got the bonding capacity. He's built major multi-million dollar projects. So I think it adds more to the, to the project in terms of credibility and timeline. But we're looking at right now a completion time sometime later in two thousand and twenty-one. That's what it looks like right now. And our, our commitment with SBCI, they give us two six minutes.
Can, can, can you guys hear me now? So we, we are in Councilmember Karbasi's office and we'll try and answer some questions. First of all, the, I'm, I'm going to let Mike explain the twenty-two million bonding amount. And, and that has to do with the minimum amount of bonding we can secure cost-effectively. I, I believe since day one, we've said the minimum amount is twenty million dollars. As far as the fourteen to sixteen million dollars roughly construction cost, that's the predicted cost we had all along. And I, I feel we're still within that window. But there are some other costs that are associated with the project. Vehicles, we're estimating roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Medical equipment is an additional, probably five hundred thousand dollars. We have contingency in there as we typically would, ten percent. And then the soft costs that the mayor had mentioned. So, and I, I don't have the latest estimate in front of me, but I believe it was around eighteen point five million dollars, everything in. Now, because the loan amount or the bond amount minimum is twenty million dollars, we have some options to do with that. If we don't utilize all of that bond amount, we can apply that towards payment, paying back the bond, which was one thing we looked at as a potential. That way, it, you know, i- if we move forward with that amount, which is the minimum, in, in sense, we could make payments if we haven't spent all that money in the startup cost. I'm going to let Mike talk about the twenty versus twenty-two million, so we're going to swap spots here.
Thank you, Jim. So in addition to all the costs associated with the project, the construction, the equipment, the contingency cost, there's also cost of issuance, which are costs that are, that we pay to our, to the bank for selling the bonds, that we pay to the lawyers. We have a bond council, we have a disclosure council. So all these folks also get paid, and so that adds to the cost of the issuance as well. And that's in the tune of about a half million dollars, much along the lines of, of some of the equipment costs. And then we also have, as Jim kind of alluded to, we have a year of capitalized interest in there. And that basically covers the debt payment while the building is being constructed. And that's a full year of debt service in there, so that's, as I mentioned earlier today, that's about a million eight right there. So that's how you get to the twenty-two, between all the construction costs and all the other items. When you, the construction contract at its core is about fifteen million. I believe council approved that in May. Then with all the other equipment costs and all the other contingencies, that gets you up to about eighteen, nineteen. And then we have another two to two point five million of issuance costs plus capitalized interest that are included in that. So at the end of the day, we're at about twenty-one. We rounded up to twenty-two just to give us cushion in case something comes up in the next couple of weeks that, before the bond sale where we go, oh my gosh, we should have added this in. We have that. I can assure council, we will only bond for what that project is projected to cost. So we may not use the full twenty-two million of authority. We will just use what is necessary in order to complete the project. But it gives us a cushion in case something pops up in the next couple. But it gives us a cushion in case something pops up in the next couple of weeks or so before the bond sale, that we can make that adjustment without having to come back to councils and get further.
One point for, for me specifically. We're about to enter the, the, the journey of budgeting in October. And, you know, it's all about the general fund. Is, is it fair to say that since you're bonding for all this, not just the construction, but the equipment and all these elements in this package, that you won't need any general fund money this upcoming year for the animal shelter?
That is correct, yes. The capitalized interest that's buried in there will pay the debt service. The first debt service payment on these bonds from the general fund isn't anticipated until FY '22.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Motion to approve?
All right, so move.
Is, is that a motion to reapprove?
Yes.
Approved?
Yes. All right, roll call, please. Let me go to the public. Anybody in the public have any questions on this item? See here.
The dogs and cats of Fresno, thank you.
Believe it or not. I, after a, a potholes, dogs and cats are the second issue for a lot of our residents. So we, we have a lot of cat and, and, and dog lovers and we're doing a pretty big deal and making sure they have the right facility. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brettafield?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Esparza?
Hi.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Hi.
Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Council President Arias?
Yes. Thank you, council. Council, before we, we proceed with, with a closed session, I wanted to make a, a quick report to the public over our budget hearings for this year and when they're going to commence. So as agreed upon by the administration, the staff is going to provide and publish the general fund budget by October 2nd. We will begin budget hearings on Monday, October 12th, at which point we'll hear the general fund overview, airports, fax, the convention center. Hopefully we'll go to lunch, then we'll come back and hear public works and public utilities. On Tuesday, October 13th, we'll hear the information services, personnel services, finance, lunch break, police and fire. On October 14th, we'll hear parks, planning and development, the city clerk, the city attorney, the mayor, city manager, and city council budgets. And we're going to leave Thursday, October 15th in the afternoon for some carryover items that we don't get to and departments. And then we'll make motions on October 20th. At that time, of course, we can hear motions during any of the budget hearings. And then we're going to try and complete the budget for a final vote on Thursday, October 22nd, and the city clerk will publish the following calendar and make it available on our city website so everybody knows. Council, you should have received an email from our city attorney outlining the procedures for this upcoming budget hearing. As a reminder, it is considered officially an amendment to the budget. So votes will have to be five votes to move items forward instead of our traditional four votes. And with that, council, we will conclude the public portion of this meeting. And we turn to closed session to complete our last item. Mayor, we'll see you in closed session as well. And for the public, thank you for tuning in. And we'll see you at the next budget hearings is the next time that we'll talk, if we don't have an emergency meeting or special meeting before then. Thank you all.
Don't forget, we're a journey in the memory of RBG.
Several folks, yeah.
Yes. So we're journeying the memory of all the individuals that we outlined today. And we will get through 2020 together and, you know, push through. Thank you all.
Separate link for the closed session?
Your same closed session one that you had in your calendar earlier today.